Session to order. And at this time, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to do so to join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance will stand and have that now.
My Father, who art in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, power, and the glory. Amen. Now we have the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we're seated tonight, I'm going to turn this over, this brief moment, to Commissioner Lee Fennington, who will ask us to join in the chamber. Silence, Lee, go ahead.
Yes, I think it's appropriate, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the invitation that we say a moment of silence for the victims of Virginia Tech in 2007. There are young people who were graduates of Pecosin High School were actually involved in that terrible tragedy, and I would like to ask that we take a moment of silence and remembrance of the three to the young victims of that tragedy.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the work session of March 19th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Francis?
Aye.
Commissioner Branson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
It's carried by a vote of four to one.
All right, and also, do I have a motion to accept the minutes for the regular session of March 19th, 2018? Anyone make a motion to accept those as written?
Still moved?
Thank you, Angie. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz.
Karen?
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Francis?
Aye.
Chair, Mr. Trump.
Aye.
That vote carried by a vote of four to one.
All right, thank you, Karen. We'll go to the audience for visitors, and at this time, we would ask anyone who has anything that they wish to address the planning commission members about anything other than the public hearing item. This is the time that you would need to do that, and if you come to the podium, please give us your name and your address. And if no one wishes, oh, anyone? Okay, no one's wishing to come up? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and close the audience for visitors and move on to the public hearing item, which is Proposed Constrained Capital Improvement Plan FY 2019 and Beyond FY 2023. And we have a brief presentation.
We do have a brief presentation.
Just a brief presentation, okay.
Yes, Ms. Wheeler.
Would you like to make that brief presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here again. I will do in a few minutes what we did to gather a little more than an hour's worth of work session at your last meeting. The subject of the public hearing this evening, the first hearing, is the Recommended Constrained Capital and Projects Improvement Plan, which is, its acronym is CCIP, but CIP is sort of interchangeable. We here use both. At your work session, I went through the process that the city council used to determine what the constraints should be on the constrained plan. We discussed with them at length the bond capacity they had under the existing city debt guidelines, also the fact that we did not have any significant ongoing dedicated cash funding. We discussed potentially assigning both of those types of funding to the constrained plan. In the end, the council said to plan for a $23 million worth of debt to be issued over the course of the five-year plan, and no additional pay-as-you-go dedicated funding for cash projects. They further outlined that 20 of that $23 million should be for schools, and the remaining three for city projects. The CIP that you have in front of you from my office takes fully into account the guidance provided by the city council. The school board has prioritized, and is reflected in your document, the expenditure of $20 million on various projects, with the single most significant of which, and first, is the middle school renovation. The remaining $3 million, which is on the city side, is largely planned for year two rather than year one of the plan. You'll see from the document that we have a significant unfunded federal government environmental mandate for TMDL. There are changes going on in the TMDL world as the HRSD-Swift project works its way through. It's quite possible that some of our commitments will be satisfactorily met by this project, which would have the effect of reducing the cost for us. We will know that in the next six to nine months, so by the time we get back here next year to work with you, we will have clarity on that purpose. But knowing that at the moment, we have an unfunded mandate, which will take all of our remaining debt capacity, the CIP has very little in terms of year-one city projects, the projects that are in there, small, relatively small amount for the TMDL project, which we're speaking about, the completion of the HVAC system project, which the city council has directed we make all possible speed on, is in fact underway, the first portion of which now, and the balance of the funding required for the replacement of engine 102 in the fire department. Everything else is recommended to be reserved until after the first year is completed, so we can see how the TMDL mandate works its way through. On the school side, there's a recommendation for the middle school project, which is slightly more than $17 million, and one bus, $68,000. The remaining items are prioritized by the school board as year-two expenses. It allows them the opportunity to get further along with the middle school, to make sure that the middle school has its number-one priority, that we've got that budget refined before we take on any other projects. It also will help pace the borrowing more closely to when we need it. There are other things in the CIP, such as state money for various things, roads, paving. There is state money and local money for repaving of a portion of With Creek Road, a sidewalk project to connect the middle school complex with the high school complex, and enterprise funds. But essentially, we normally focus primarily on the general fund projects. I think I've summarized them. I would note that your last work session, we had an extensive presentation from the superintendent, taking you through the process that the school board went through on consolidation, up through its prioritization of the $20 million. Our city engineer, Ellen Roberts, was here to update you on three separate sidewalk projects that we are working on, and that's how Ellen and I, in fact, closed our day on Friday, working with VDOT in York County and further and southern one on Victory Boulevard. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and we're here, as well as the superintendent and city engineer and a few other members of staff, should you have any questions after your hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. So we're ready to go ahead, and we'll open the public hearing on this, and if anyone has anything they would like to let us know, please come up. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and the planning commission will take this under consideration. Work session and talked about this. Not like it's a new item here. Boss, because we worked on it a little bit.
We did work on it quite a bit. I'll just sort of repeat two things that I mentioned at the work session. Both of them happen to do with the school system, not picking on the school system, but when you got 20 out of 23 million, you got the big part of the ticket to begin with. My first comment is pretty small. It's the high school locker room, and we mentioned it the last time we reviewed the CIP, which was probably a year and a half ago, and I thought the planning commission made the point then that we're really concerned about delaying, we updated the locker room because it says, and I quote, "Showers are inoperable." Now, maybe that only means one, maybe that means all, but that's what it says, the showers are inoperable, and to me, that's a health hazard. It's a health hazard for our students, and it's a health hazard for anybody you bring in here to play a basketball game or baseball game, or anybody uses those locker rooms. And so I really believe that that needs to be accelerated and get taken care of. Why should we, as one of the premier cities in the region, have inoperable showers in the high school? That's just, I have difficulty with that. And my other point, the same thing that I mentioned before, I'm going to sound like I'm being contradictory. I've known for 14 years, we have got to do something with the middle school, and clearly the council and the school board decided to keep it open. I understand that, I fully support that. I just, when I read it, when I see it, it sort of sounds to be like what we're dedicating to the middle school is $17,1100 that's left over after we spend everything else, as opposed to a definitive program of what needs to be done, or ought to be done, or we want to be done. And it seems to me that's backwards. I would much rather, I don't need to see the detail, but much rather see the city have an idea of what needs to be done, and if it's less than $17 million, that's great. We've got some money left over, and if it's more than $17 million, the city's got to figure out how to pay the bill and not piecemeal it. So again, with a small paragraph here, that may not be what happened, but it's hard for me to figure out the genesis of $17,1100 other than what's left over.
Yes, Madam Chairman, and I did view the video of the presentation, although I was unable to attend the work session, and thank you, City Manager, for having all your staff there. I know it's a huge impact on people's personal lives to come back in evenings, and I do want to compliment the city staff for their responsiveness and under real fiscal constraints of being able to prioritize. I do have a question concerning, and it's the school consolidation. I was unable to ask the question, so I will pose it at this point. Was there any consideration to sell the middle school property and for a mixed-use development and take the proceeds and bank it for a future potential site?
Yeah, I can definitely answer that one quickly, and that answer is no. What went into the school consolidation decision first and foremost was, do we need to consolidate down to three schools, or do we, based on all this new information that we received, need to maintain a four-school system? So the decision was to maintain a four-school system. So then the decision was made, knowing that we were doing that, that we did need to do the renovation work on the middle school. To address your earlier comment, Mr. Travis, they, what we did have that facility study done at the middle school, so we're well aware of what can be achieved for that $17 million mark, and that's why there's comfort level with that. It's not just picked a number out of the hat, it was looking at the range of options for renovation, all the way through, from just immediate repairs to an entirely new building. So know that we do have a real sense of what we're actually able to do for $17 million, and it will be a major renovation. So hopefully that answers those two questions, and since I'm up here. Showers do work at the high school now. We are changing out some mechanisms this summer to get them to work even better, but I did want to let you know that, so we need to fix that on the CIP, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So the question is, was there any study done for a mixed-use development and repurposing the middle school other than a school?
No, we did not study what else we could do with that property, because we, once the decision was made by the board to maintain the four-school system, we knew we needed a middle school, and so by renovating that, then we can meet the needs of our students and community into the future. So no, we never looked at selling or doing any kind of mixed-use projects on any of the school properties, because we know we need the schools and the properties, so. And we also have the field behind the middle school, which is used by the community for a number of things as well.
There are some wonderful examples throughout the state where, and I know the constraints with us just having four buildings, but it gets to a point where the buy date of an older building becomes really difficult for a modern educational program. The historical significance of that building, I think, could potentially be a wonderful adaptive reuse, perhaps, and I would, again, I guess it was one of those things that I wanted to ask at the meeting, and I was not able to attend. I would be really interested to know if there was a potential revenue generator for that space, and whether those dollars could be perhaps put into a brand-new school at a different.
Yeah, because we haven't done that kind of study and don't plan to do that kind of study, because we're going to renovate the middle school, I wouldn't be able to give you those numbers. I don't know if somebody else can estimate what a mixed-use property would bring to the city, anywhere in the city, but it's just not a study that we plan to do, knowing we're going to use that property for the middle school.
And the other question I did have, and we've just finished the comprehensive plan, in fact, we just had a work session just before this meeting, and there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect on the population projections. And my real concern is that we're premising a huge amount of city dollars going into a projection of student enrollment. And so, you know, in prior administrations in this town, I've been here a long time, we're very conservative with our dollars. It's always been reactive rather than proactive. It seems to me we're building a facility or enhancing a facility without having the student numbers there at time. York County went through over 20-year retrofit for their buildings over an extended period of time, and I'm just wondering if, again, if there is some thought about delaying until we have some definitive trends rather than projections for enrollment.
Well, yeah, and I know that you weren't able to attend, but I did spend some time talking about how enrollment played into the decision that the school board made, so I don't want to spend too much time up here and take your precious time, but in 2012, you may remember that we had the consolidation committee first meet, looked at enrollment data at that point, and decided it wasn't the right time to make the decision about school consolidation, and their recommendation was to wait until 2016. So actually, the board went one more year into 2017. The enrollment data that we have, that we're using for those projections, comes from the Weldon Cooper Center, which does all the demographics for the state. It's a well-known organization. Its research base, we make, as I said, state government makes a lot of decisions based on the projections that they're able to make about populations and all things related to them. So we are using the data that we receive from them, and we provided them data about all of the housing that's being built currently in the city, and also knowing what's projected to come. So they were really able to take all the information that was out there to provide us enrollment projections that show 10 years from now, that we are very likely going to be at the same number of students that we were in 2000, or just about in 2006, when Pecosin had its highest-ever enrollment of students. So do know that the decision really is based on good research and good data. We've already started to see the enrollment increase. This is the first year that we've actually seen an enrollment increase, and we're anticipating another one next year, based on our projections, and also based on what we saw in kindergarten registration this spring. So I just want the Pecosin community to know that the decision about consolidation was really based on a lot of research and a lot of data. We had numerous meetings with the school board throughout last fall, bringing back more and more data, so. And because we're using the same organization and research group that does so much data projection for the state, that we're confident that when they're providing us data, it's accurate, and they've been pretty consistent with us, certainly since I've been here for almost 10 years now, in what they projected and what we see, so. Hope that helps.
If I may, Dr. Prash, because I meant to mention earlier, I understand your figures. I did notice on your presentation, that if I understood it correctly, you're projecting that the enrollment at the middle school will be about 90 students over capacity.
Yes, so we may need to look at building some capacity into the middle school. Nine years ago, we actually had, when I first arrived here, almost 10 now, we had a, I like to call them learning cottages, but people will call them trailers, at the middle school with a couple of classrooms. So part of what we are going to do, and what we've projected for the cost on the middle school, is we projected them with that increased enrollment. When we did the, we wanted to update those costs that we had received from the facility study back in the 2013 school year. What we did was give the architecture and engineering company the numbers that the Cooper Center has predicted for 10 years out for now in the middle school, so they projected those costs on creating or renovating the building to accommodate for that increase in enrollment that we're projecting.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Anybody, any questions you have, that's why I'm here this evening, so happy to answer them.
I would just like to ask, the $17 million that's going into the middle school, what kind of life extension are you anticipating gaining from that?
I think what we, and I don't have it in front of me, I think we were looking at at least a 20, 25-year life extension, potentially more, so.
Is this going to require gutting that school?
We don't know yet exactly how we're going to do it. We have to get an RFP out on the street, once we know we have the funding, and outline what, lay out what we're looking to have, and then bringing, they'll come back in with projections of exactly how they'll do it. I think they'll do some, you know, in some areas, they're probably going to have to take down sections, but in other areas, no, they won't have to, they'll just be renovating and updating some of it. So it's hard for me to speak to exactly what will happen until we actually are working with an architecture firm.
How would you know how much it's going to cost if you don't know what you're going to have to do?
Because what they've able to cost out is all of the different activities, I guess, that we need to do, whether it's through the, a lot of it's got to do with the systems behind the school, in other words, the HVAC systems, technology, that building was certainly not built with the current technology in mind, all of those sorts of things. What we didn't talk to them about was, we want this classroom wall to come down and this one to come down. That's all included in their estimates to update that facility, to update finishes and do that kind of work. So I just can't tell you exactly here what's going to happen in the building. What we do know is generally, with that amount of money, when we're talking about modernizing the building, which is the option that's closest to that $17 million, what we can anticipate going on with the building. But we haven't gotten with an architect and said, we want this to look like this and this to look like this, but we have a good sense of what it takes to modernize a building.
I guess my fear is, with a building of that age and the renovations that are required to bring it up to current code, oftentimes, you run into cost overruns that are not anticipated. And my fear is, is that we're going to get in the middle of something here that is ultimately going to cost more than $17 million, and would we have been better off to hold off until we could just build a new school? That's my biggest fear, because with the experience that I have with remodeling renovation, more times than not, it's underestimated the cost to cure, and I just think, are we still putting Band-Aids, even with $17 million, on a building that just doesn't warrant it, and that perhaps we should be stepping back and looking at building a new facility completely?
Well, in terms of code compliance, our estimates include getting the building up to code, because as you likely know, and I've probably mentioned in some presentations I've done here throughout the community, as soon as we start to do work on that building, the grandfathering that we have now on certain parts of the building goes away. So for example, we know that we'll need to add at least one elevator, potentially two, unless we connect the two second floors, so that's a good example of where we know we need to have come up to code on that building. So know that that's all included in that modernization cost. And as far as timing goes, once, you know, we knew, once we made the decision about consolidation, that the next discussion needed to be, what do we do with the middle school? Because in 2013, when the board at that time said, okay, we know that we're not going to make a consolidation decision now until 2016, which became 2017, but the decision was, let's get a sense of what work needs to be done to the building and what is that cost range, knowing that this was in the middle of the recession, that there was no way that we were going to be able to do that work on the middle school back in 2013, 14, 15, because at that time, if those either were following the school budget, we were making deep cuts every year, and we were very fortunate that the city was trying to help us, certainly couldn't cover the full cost of the cuts we were getting from the state, but at least help us each year with our operating budget. So there was no way to then say, okay, and by the way, we also would like to do a major renovation, now that we're through the recession, and now that the city is in a good place in terms of opportunities to borrow, you know, the decision by the board, and I believe supported by city council, is now it's time to say, what are we going to do with this middle school, so that we're prepared as we bring more students into it, and so that we modernize it, so it's the best for our students and ultimately then our community as well, so.
Well, you say, you know, now that the recession is over, it's been my experience that tax revenues are still lagging. I don't think we're in a great place. I think that it is, the real estate industry as a whole is rebounding, but I wouldn't say it's in a great place, and I do think there is some caution that needs to be exercised in committing that amount of money to a renovation, as opposed to, I don't know if you've had an environmental assessment on that building yet, but that can be significant, and quite oftentimes, that is one of the most significant costs in that. And I really do have reservations about putting that much money in that building, as opposed to stepping back and looking at perhaps building a new facility, because I know that tax revenue is what's going to pay for this, and at some point in time, I mean, you can keep, you can keep raising your tax rate, but if the assessments are not reflective of what the real estate industry is doing, I mean, at some point in time, the burden of the taxes are going to be too much for everyone, because it is such a bedroom community. And that is a concern that I have here, is the tax rate increase that we're anticipating right now to help cover this, and if cost overruns come into play, and it's going to take $20 million or $25 million to complete this project, we're looking at another tax rate increase, because I don't think the real estate market values are responding and rebounding as quickly as we had all hoped that they would. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there, it's just, I'm just really thinking out loud, actually.
I appreciate your concern.
Any other questions? You know, I guess, just a comment for me, looking at it a completely personal aspect, is I do have two young kids, and I want to ensure that they have schools that are conducive to learning, and that they have an environment where they want to go to school and that they feel welcome. So that's something that's very important. I know that, again, the citizen surveys place a high importance on the schools. I think it's very important, I think that's why a lot of people move here. I think also attracting young families to Pecosin is important to help fulfill these population projections, you know, things like having these sidewalk programs in the CIP. I think that helps if you're a young family, you want to move somewhere with projects, or I'm sorry, with sidewalks, so I think that's good. I think that all these will kind of help feed the student projections, you know, things that we can do, I had mentioned at our work session, you know, we have a unique city here, and things, we just want to ensure that we have a beautiful city, a city with good schools, a city with schools where students have a welcoming environment, and so that's just my two cents, and I think that you have great points as far as putting a Band-Aid on the middle school. Again, personally, I just want a place where my kids can go and have a good environment for learning.
Good. Thank you.
Comments on the CIP myself.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I guess I did a couple of spot checks on the numbers for the cost of replacing engine number 102, specifically. And there was a little bit of disconnect. I did the math. Last year's CIP indicated it was going to be $350,000. This year's CIP mentions it's 135. And so, I think I did the math, because there was a city council floorback from the beach funds-
Correct.
-that got redirected to purchase the new pumper. Is that correct?
Correct. So, it's a two-piece project that we have. We have 125,000. That was from Mystic Point. That's sitting currently and undesigned in the Capital Project Fund right now. And then, we have the additional amount that we've requested in this year to do the second piece for the fire pumper. And as it relates, the cost has gone down a little bit, because now that we've given the directions to the fire department of what they can purchase, they've been able to streamline it and get exactly what they want.
Yeah, so congratulations. It's nice to see those shots.
That's a good job for them.
It was nice to see the, you know, the amount decrease from one year to the next. But there is a follow-on issue that I sort of uncovered as I was reading through, and that's the issue of private lanes, and their ability to receive city services. And we've had some discussion about subdivisions in residential zoning, et cetera, in our prior work session. It seems to me that engine 102, if I'm not mistaken from the rationale, is actually a small pumper that will allow access to private lanes. Is that correct?
Correct. This is going to be a mini pumper. So, it's going to be smaller than what you're used to see.
Right. And then, when I look at the drainage improvements put forth by the city engineer, she was mentioning that flooding has been exacerbated by private lanes, and there's going to be some improvement on Pecosin Avenue, because of, I guess, it's not draining correctly. Is that, is that right?
Not, I don't recall.
Yeah, so there's piping, piping that's going to be going on, because of flooding that's occurring at a private lane on Pecosin Avenue?
Everything we're doing, I'll have to check the section you're talking about. We drain public infrastructure.
Right.
We do not drain private lanes. I'm not aware of any situation that I'm remembering that was impacted by private lanes.
Okay.
So.
Maybe it was private property. Yeah.
No, I mean, we have private property that drains onto city streets, just because of the natural fall and rise of the land.
Right.
But we don't, we do not drain private property. Our city-owned drainage system is intended to drain city infrastructure and city streets. So, we don't handle backyard ditches, for example. I always try to remind people while I'm here, that they're responsible for draining that themselves.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that clarification, Ellen. The, I guess, the concern that I was seeing is the proliferation of private lanes, is where I'm going with this. Because there's been a couple of situations where we had by right family subdivisions, and I go down one on, off of Brickhouse Road, as an example. There's now 14 houses down a private lane. And at what point do we say to citizens, you know, you're impacting the drainage and the emergency vehicle, to the extent that we have to buy a special pumper to get down your lane, when everyone else has sort of got that standard right of way, right of way? So, it was just, it was just a question I had, I guess, in terms of, to what degree, you know, we're really trying to accommodate non-compliant, you know, housing areas?
Twofold. I think I could have worded the Pecosin Avenue piping upgrade a little bit better.
Yeah.
What I was intending to say there, it didn't impact the public infrastructure. Because private land, land does drain into the city system, it will also, as a side benefit, help them. But the property did not spend any additional money, or would not spend any additional money, or incur any expenses because of private drainage. It was just a side benefit to the work that was proposed. And I-
So, private road is not, needs to be taken out of, I think it's on page 26. So, that's, okay, Pecosin Avenue, private road and property flooding. So, you're saying it's not a private road that's causing that?
Yes. Well, the point was, it will, I will edit that. The point is, in addition to the work, to the benefit it's going to provide to the public and, public system and to the public infrastructure, it will also help some private citizens, or private properties. Though, that wasn't the intent.
Okay.
With regard to private lanes, I'm sitting on the Development Review Committee. I can tell you that the zoning rules have changed over the years, and the use of private lanes is getting more and more restricted, but I would defer to planning on that.
And just one more comment. Absolutely delighted that we are, that we're finally getting to the point to fund an integrated infrastructure study and plan. I owe it to city staff for moving ahead with that project.
If we have no more discussion on it, do we have, have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I would say that, because I know this has been reviewed by city council and school board, and all the other folks very carefully, I'm going to recommend that I'm going to make a motion that we approve the CCI P.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second. Yeah.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fennickson?
Overlapped and aye.
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 Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
I have some serious mixed emotions about this. I, I'm going to have to vote against it, I think.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of four.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is proposed amendment to Article 11, Village Commercial District, Section 11-19, sign requirements. And we have, I guess, Wally?
I'm going to do some adjusting here, and get on the proper PowerPoint presentation. Let me see here. Okay, let me see if I got it clear. I do. Let me see if I know how to use it. Well, let's see here. Yep, I do know how to use it. Okay, I guess you might say, I'm back. We've been through this a lot, and I do want to issue an apology before I get started on this. I thought, one thing I would do tonight, that I did not do at the last meeting, was kind of give you a background. Since electronic message signage was such a topic of conversation, well, as compared with everything else in this particular ordinance, the original, the original version of electronic message signs was introduced into our ordinance on 12/8/14, December 8th, 2014. And basically, that followed a planning commission meeting that was, I think, on the first of that month, if I'm not mistaken, where the planning commission recommended 4 to 2, to pass an amendment, to recommend an amendment to the ordinance that would allow for electronic message signage for public uses and for the city of Pecosin only. So, basically, it's just for the city and the school system, and that sort of thing. The city council did approve that, and even at that date, that being 12/8 of 2014, even at that date, there was some talk about giving it a six-month trial run, and maybe coming back after six months to look at doing electronic message signage for commercial uses. So, really, fast forward to February 12, 2018, and that's when city council did approve an amendment to allow electronic message signage for all commercial districts, of which Village Commercial is one, B2 is another, General Commercial, any commercial district, and for commercial uses in other districts. So, that's, that's how we got there. Now, I mentioned the 12th of February, because I think that's kind of the rub in all this. The city council essentially made a policy decision at that point to allow electronic message signage in the commercial districts, again, of which Village Commercial was certainly one. So, with that direction, and with the additional direction provided on the 26th of last month, the March 26th meeting, where I think city council members laid out their rationale for approving that amendment, basically, it comes down to not wanting to show favoritism to the city versus commercial. And as for the question of, why don't you just ban them all, they felt very strongly that we needed to bring Pecosin, and I'm just going to borrow words here, these are not my words, but bring Pecosin into the 21st century, basically, with modern signs, as technology will allow. So, in response to that, the version you have in front of you tonight does include provisions for electronic message signage. And I've got some guests here from Straight Shot Brewery, and for their benefit, particularly, I will go back through the PowerPoint one more time, so forgive me. We did re-advertize this, well, let me back up. There's one thing I didn't explain. The reason you're seeing this here tonight is because the planning commission deadlocked at 3:00 to 3:00 on both versions. Last month, we tried it both ways. Because the planning commission did not make a definitive recommendation by state code, I could not take it to city council. So, that's why you're seeing it again. And we have an odd number here, so no matter what happens, we're going to get a majority. So, we'll be all right. Okay, so we re-advertized it on March 30th and April 6th, no adjacent property owners. Okay, and again, that's a little blurry. I could probably read it better without my glasses. We're going to delete the version, the part A that says freestanding monument signs shall not be allowed in this district. We're going to get rid of that. And we're going to replace it with sign requirements. Now, the first, this A here deals with the whole project area. So, the whole project area can have one of the following four onsite sign types, for the purpose of identifying, again, the entire project development area. Freestanding signs, in accord with the provisions below, which I'll get to, and further regulated in accord with Appendix D of the City Pecosin Sign Ordinance. That actually is our sign ordinance. We have our sign regulations in about three different places, and we might get around to fixing that, and give it enough time. But tonight, we're just doing this. Under the freestanding signs, you have one freestanding sign is permitted per unified development area. Now, for the fountains, that truly is an entire development area. For Straight Shot, it's really one property. But, provided that unified development area has a maximum road for under 50 feet. One additional freestanding sign is permitted for a unified development area fronting on two public roads. So, and I'll give you an illustration of that here in a minute. As long as there's a separate entrance on each road, only one freestanding sign is permitted per entrance. And I put this in parentheses, where we sort of supersede Appendix D. Where we have specificity, 11-19 will hold. As far as the rest of the requirements, it will be Appendix D. B, setback restrictions contained in Appendix D shall apply to common property lines of parcel. What this is, that's a long way of saying, that if you're under A, an entire unified development area, you're not going to be required to meet setbacks from another parcel within that area. However, once you go outside the project development area, you will have to meet the setbacks. In the case of Straight Shot, basically, it's only one property, so they would have to meet the setbacks. And the interior of the fountains, they could have signs within the setback area, but not at the edges. Okay. This really probably applies to the fountains more than anything else right now, since we've really just got the fountains and Straight Shot to consider at this moment. Hopefully, that'll change. Where a conditional use permit has been issued for residential development, separate from commercial, office, and/or mixed-use structures, an additional freestanding sign shall be allowed. Signs has to be monument style, otherwise, the signage shall conform with Section A and C of Appendix D. And I'll show you how this works in just a second, if my clicker doesn't go out on me. Oh, there we go. Now, when we get to the second part of this, we're talking about signs, well, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that right. Under A, you can have a freestanding sign. If you do not want a freestanding sign, you can still get a wall sign, a projection sign, boy, that's a very dim red light in it, or one window sign. So, you can still choose that option if you want to. Okay. Now, we break it down on per tenant, because there's a number of tenants, not necessarily at Straight Shot, but certainly in the fountains of Pecosin. There'll be multiple tenants. A development may have one of the following onsite signs per non-residential tenant, wall sign, projection sign, or window sign. That's unchanged. The only thing I did was make it clear that we were talking about onsite signage and per non-residential tenant. Okay. And I think I already covered the freestanding sign allowance for residential. Okay. The other changes we're making is under the area of sign illumination, color, and design. Illumination, all wall projection, wall projection, and window signs have to be externally illuminated. That is unchanged. Freestanding signs may be externally illuminated, or internally illuminated, or be electronic message signs. So, that's where we introduce internal illumination and electronic message signs. Color and design, I cannot state this enough, this is an important one. Village commercial developments certainly lend themselves to multiple signs. A harmonious and unified, if I can read my writing here, read my print, these glasses, I'm getting old, signing program shall be required. So, they need to submit a plan. In the case of backlit, internally illuminated signs and electronic message signs, the background shall be dark, and the lettering light, in order that the lighting penetrate the letters only, so as to reduce unnecessary glare, improve readability at a great distance, and render to the sign itself and the community in general a more pleasing appearance. Keep in mind that Architectural Review Board is also going to take a look at this, as we go along. And also remember that our provisions for electronic message signs are already very restrictive. Number one, a freestanding sign can't be more than six feet in height, or eight feet in height for residential. And number two, we don't allow scrolling. We don't allow flashing. A lot of the big signs that you see at stadiums, that have the illumination, we don't allow that. None of that's going to be allowed. No flashing. And 11-19 is just basically saying that specific sign requirements in 11-19 will supersede Appendix D, and everything not specifically colored, covered, in 11-19 will be, will go to Appendix D. So, with that said, examples at long last. The beige is the village community area, and that is the Straight Shot Brewery property right there. That's us, who actually, we're in building somewhere over here, right about now. Might actually be there. So, what they would be allowed, under this ordinance, is they would be allowed a freestanding sign on the property- on the property, which is right there. And in Appendix D, there are provisions for off-premise signs, as long as you are a property that immediately, uh, is immediately adjacent to the property in question. So they could put a freestanding sign, uh, and given their location, this will be very important. They could put their sign on this property right here. Now, if these guys, that being the Economic Development Authority, would decide to get rid of that property line, then the sign could be moved there, because this becomes one property, again, that's adjacent to the Straight Shot property. And that's, that's just a close-up of the property. And actually, I'm going to go to this, uh, this, uh, concept development plan that, uh, looks pretty good, Gus. Um, the sign, if you can see that sort of bluish box in there, if, yeah, it's highlighted and look, doesn't point, but if you see the bluish box back there, that's the approximate, for approximate place that you're going to have a freestanding sign. Now, this is, at least the way it's configured right now, we're thinking that this, that road curving back there is going to essentially be one road, it's going to connect with Althus eventually, uh, uh, probably at a fairly distant point in the future. But, uh, but, uh, they will dedicate that area as part of the site plan. They could also choose to move that blue, you know, further back towards the middle of the property if they wanted to, but I would think, and I don't know, they're, they're the bosses on this, but if you've got a onsite sign on the road, you may want to have one on the property that sort of denotes where you are, so that people know where to turn. But that's how that would work for the brewery. This is how it would work for the fountains of Pecosin. Now, they've built, golly, they've built that building, they've got site plan approval to build two additional buildings. Uh, they have not initiated anything down on this part of the property, however. But assuming that they do at some point in the future, because these are two different public roads, they could have a streets, uh, freestanding sign off With Creek Road, and they could have one off of Althus. If they do some residential development, and admittedly, there's going to be some site considerations to consider there, but they could probably get a few, uh, they would be able to have a third, uh, residential freestanding sign on that property. So that's, and, and, but, but again, only if residential is built. Um, okay, and the images, you've seen these before, packaged them together after it snowed, so you could actually see the signs a little bit better. This is the Sevillah Office Complex that's on the corner of Victory Boulevard and City Hall Avenue. I know you've seen them before, I just thought I would go through them again. Uh, the important one is this one, and, and admittedly, you can't see this worth beans at today, but I noticed this evening you could see it pretty well. This is a electronically illuminated sign. And the only reason I really point that out, I mean, you could argue they could put it in there and it could look a lot better, I understand all that. But the main point I'm trying to reach, uh, to make here is the dark background and the light lettering. That's really the main point I'm trying to make. Um, that's pretty much it for the PowerPoint. Sorry for running you through that again, uh, and a whole spill again, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Wally.
Wally, I just had one question on the, um, I forget what page it was, where you described the backlit sign.
Yes.
You had a, a signed program will be required.
Yes.
Be programmed, maybe should be planned?
Okay.
I'm just, I don't know, that just struck me as an odd word for that.
It's actually borrowed from Appendix D. It's the same language we use in Appendix D, except in Appendix D, it's, um, it should, and here we changed it to shall. Um, but that's, that's where that language came from, and I'm not going to argue with you.
Signing program shall be required.
Yeah, I, I mean, a signing, a unified signing packet or, you know?
I think a plan or, I think of a plan.
Okay.
If I'm, I'm planting my signs where I'm, I don't know, that's just me.
Sure.
I mean, it's not, not a big deal, but program just doesn't seem to be the correct word.
Yeah, 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 I got you, I got you.
Wally, I, um, I have a question. Could you walk back to the genesis of the two thousand fourteen ordinance that allowed?
I could, yes.
Yes, what, what was the, um, I was not on the commission at that time. Uh, you mentioned there was going to be a trial with a six-month report, did I hear you say that?
It was mentioned by the city council, and I'm, I'm looking at my, um, my minutes here.
So the ordinance came through this body initially and then was approved by city council?
Yes, this is at the city council, uh, there was some concerns, and, and they actually had a, one dissenting vote here, and it may have, and, and I don't know enough about all the details of this hearing, uh, as to whether, you know, that was a concern, because the dissenting vote was from Vice Mayor Freeman and, and, you know, it could have been, even at that time, he had a concern about not giving it to, you know, commercial uses. That's a question that would be best asked to him. Uh, all I was saying is that there was some talk at that hearing that, uh, that they might want to look at, uh, allowing electronic message signs in commercial areas as soon as six months after here, according to the minutes, anyway.
Okay, so, so the-
That's not saying they had to, and, and they didn't, you know?
So my question was, when, when were government, when was government, uh, given the approval for using electronic signs?
Well, it would have been, it would have been from the date of this amendment, uh,
Okay, so that would have come through the planning commission, I guess?
December eighth, two thousand fourteen. No, this came from the city council. Before that, the planning commission met, the planning commission did make a recommendation on this. And they made a recommendation, um, I got the wrong sheet here, hold on just a second, sorry. Uh, they made the recommendation four to two to recommend approval of the ordinance as it was constructed, which again, was limited to city use, essentially, school use, city use.
School use, okay.
Right.
If, if memory serves, you may, you may correct me in this, but I remember correctly, the original genesis was that we wanted to sign across the street here, advertise public events such as the seafood festival and the five K and that sort of thing. And the school just kind of fell on, and that never happened. And, uh, and, and you're right, it was not a, it was, it was, it was not a, it was not a, um, unanimous vote on the planning commission at the time. I do not know it wasn't a planning, a unanimous vote in council, but it was not-
Right, no, yeah, four to two and, and, yeah, yeah, four to two.
So, so, so it was a clear, a clear announcement to use electronic messaging signs for government purposes?
Certainly, yes.
Yeah, okay. And you mentioned six months' reports, was it like a trial?
Well, that was just mentioned in the minutes, uh, and that, that came from, uh, let's see, that came from, uh, Councilman Southall. That wasn't part of what was adopted.
Out of the ordinance?
No, no, that was just discussion that was had at the time. The ordinance was to allow it for government uses, there was no mandate necessarily to come back in six months. And, and, you know, as evidenced by the fact that it was, well, it was quite a while after that that we, that the city council adopted it, uh, February eighteen.
Um, well, let me, let me just, I, I, because I wasn't at the last meeting and it was a tie vote. Thanks, guys, for this to come back. Um, so, I, let me just, let me just, um, I guess, in terms of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've just discussed the comprehensive plan and light pollution was on chapter five dash twenty. Uh, and so, you know, you could, you could argue that we're actually promoting more light pollution by allowing this ordinance to go through right across the board. Um, the others, I, you know, I took time, actually, it was last night, I went up to Yorktown Beach and, uh, drove the Route seventeen corridor. And in the matter of maybe five miles, there were fourteen electronic message signs on Route seventeen. Four were churches, um, and most were major corporations such as the Wawa and the, uh, some of the gas stations. In the daytime, it tended to blend in. When I came home at night, that's all you could see were those big bright message signs.
Right.
Just jumping out. Um, and so, I, I know there was some discussion in the prior meeting about fairness, and, you know, here we are just looking at the Village Commercial as being impacted under our decision tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
And, so, you know, we're looking at the others, um, the rest of the city already being under approval. I just have some concerns. Um, I took a picture of the, uh, the fire station, they're advertising their fish fry. And I've got this really ugly-looking trailer with a big message on it, right in my neighborhood as I came in tonight. I love my fire department, I love the fish fry, um, but I, I don't know, I just, I, I, I was struggling with what message, these message signs might do. Um, and so, I, I have reservations. Um, on the Straight Shot Brewery issue, uh, in terms of signage, let's get these guys out of the ground. I, I, you know, it's, um, has it, how long has it been, I think, has it been eighteen months since we received their first permit to get, to get going?
Well, since we did a conditional use permit, yes, it's been quite, it might actually have been a little longer than that.
So are we still, is, is, is the sign the holdup, getting these guys going?
Well, the sign's a big thing, and, and, and to your, to your points, all of which I, I hear, keep in mind that the Village Community District is basically this district right here. It's all, it's all, uh, subject to ARB. We've talked about the blank background. The other thing is, keep in mind that we're not going to allow signs, commercial signage, over six feet in height. And I believe, I don't have Appendix D with me up here, but I believe it's no more than forty square feet of sign area. So it's not going to be but so big, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Uh, now, you know, as far as lighting, yeah, I mean, there's obviously going to be some lighting impact. But again, if you've got a dark background with the light lettering, that should not be a big issue. It really shouldn't. Now, you know, eventually we may come around to doing the lighting ordinance in, in the city and, and, and we'll require things like foot candle measurements and things of that nature. We don't have that right now. But, you know, the idea was to, uh, make some provision for these in Village Commercial without sacrificing our aesthetic standards. And I mean, I think this is probably about the closest we're going to come right now to doing that. And I'm also mindful of the direction that we've gotten from city council. Now, obviously, the planning commission can make whatever recommendation they want, and I will duly carry that to the city council. But I was asked two meetings ago what I thought was going to happen. And what I think is going to happen is that they're going to approve the version with electronic message signage. But I do understand your concerns, and I, and I believe those concerns, I would hope the city council understands from where the planning commission was coming from when they made the original recommendation back in February or, I guess it was late January now. Uh, it was actually my birthday, January eighteenth, when y'all made the recommendation for them not to approve it. But, but again, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to balance the two, I guess you'd say.
Wally, what we're talking about tonight is strictly Village Commercial. The council has already passed electronic messaging on all the other commercial property.
They passed it on Village Commercial. The issue with Village Commercial is you can't have a freestanding sign.
At this point, we want to deny Village Commercial when council has clearly made their preference across the board, I think. Just my comment.
I have a question about, um, back to the freestanding sign portion of it. Uh, so you had mentioned, um, in particular with the brewery, that there's a possibility of having a sign on Victory because, uh, the adjacent property is EDA. Now, if that's EDA, then they're attempting to market that. Will their sign be grandfathered in if someone does come and buy that parcel? Then can they say, oh, no, I don't want that sign anymore?
I would think that they would need, and I'll let Straight Shot speak to that, but I would think they would want to make sure that they've made adequate provisions to where that sign would, you know, would be able to stay. I don't know what the EDA's plans are going to be for that property, but, uh, you know, certainly I would think Straight Shot would want some assurances. And the EDA would also want some assurances to know that, well, you know, if we buy this property or we sell this property, someone wants to develop on it, are they going to be able to do the signage they need to do, uh, which I think is what, yeah, exactly what you're getting at.
Have a bunch of signs there at the entrance.
So we'd have to be very careful there, yeah, to answer your question, we'd have to be very careful.
So would that be in an ordinance about the freestanding sign, a transfer of property?
Well, we already have provisions that are going to limit that, and they're going to have to work within those provisions. I mean, you can only have one freestanding sign per, per entrance or, or per public road entrance. Let's put it that way.
Well, piggybacking on Angie, if someone were to buy that parcel, would they also be allowed to put an electronic sign there in addition to the brewery sign?
The only way that that would happen, let me take, uh, let me go back to the, the drawing. Uh, the only thing that would happen, the way that would happen is, let's just say that, um, doggone it, let's just say, is that even working? I don't think it's, yeah, there it is. Okay, let's just say that they don't get rid of that property line, and for whatever reason, Straight Shot puts one there, then the EDA could potentially put one on that property. I mean, hypothetically.
What if they, if they do, if they do get rid of the property line, though, I guess, are we going to, are we potentially looking at two signs there, one for the brewery and one for whatever other business may purchase that parcel from the EDA? Would that then require, they would also have the right to put a, a sign at that entrance as well, is that correct? And how would they coincide with one another?
If there was another use on that property, like I said, I, I think that that, I think allowing two freestanding signs, whatever they are, on one, on one roadway is, is going to be an issue. I don't think, I don't think they're going to be allowed to do it, I mean, the way I read it.
Well, I, I know, but if you're buying, if I'm, if, if I'm potentially looking at that other, that parcel of EDA, and that brewery has their sign there, and I'm buying that for my business, then I'm going to want to be able to place a sign at that entrance as well. So then, how will that work?
Well, I, I mean, I would say at that point, then, you know, just taking it to its logical conclusion that there may be an issue with that off-premise sign.
Well, oh, I'm-
I mean, I think the applicant may be able to clear some of this up for you, but-
Let y'all speak during the public hearing.
Not the applicant, I'm sorry, I misspoke, uh, the, the owners of, of Straight Shot Brewery.
So, I'm, I'm still unclear, I'm sorry. Um, so are you saying then that the new owner of that parcel, if it were sold, would not be allowed to put a sign there, even though?
I'm saying he's got an off-premise sign right there that's dedicated to Straight Shot Brewery. If he wants to put another freestanding sign on that property, then I think something needs to happen with that off-premise sign.
Would that, wouldn't putting a sign there on the EDA property require some sort of contract between the EDA and the brewery? And if it would, shouldn't that all be covered in the contract, not in the-
That, that is what I would say, yes.
That's not our talk, that's something we have to do in the contract.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But as far as the, as far as the ordinance would go, if they fail to do that, if they fail to do that, they would not be allowed to put an additional sign there, is that what I'm hearing?
He could not have another freestanding sign, that's correct.
Okay, now, so, so this ordinance is allowing the brewery to have a sign there because it's on a, an adjacent parcel. Yeah, do they need a sign there on that corner, is what I'm wondering? Is this an automatic requirement that an adjacent parcel can allow the other adjacent parcel to have a sign?
That, that is the allowance in Appendix D, yes, in the sign ordinance. They need that sign there to identify traffic coming off of, uh, Victory Boulevard, where to turn on City Hall and come down there.
What about other parcels that are back on Village Commercial that are in that same situation, that are building on parcels, interior parcels?
Well, you're limited to only one off-premise sign, number one. But number two, if they chose not to do it there, they could potentially do it on that property. I think over there, you talked about Mr. Han's property.
So in other words, we could have, I don't know, seems, what about other interior parcels? What other interior parcels are there besides Straight Shot?
Uh, well, let me see.
That could theoretically be impacted by being able to put a sign on an adjacent parcel at the entrance?
Well, I, I mean, uh, however, unli- Well, I, I mean, uh, however unlikely it is, I think Mr. White's down there, uh, if he ever did develop that property, then potentially he could have an off-premise sign up there. That would depend on whether he has an agreement with Mr. Han. All of this is very unlikely, but, but it is theoretically possible.
To me, that there should be something whereby you have one sign with the businesses listed on it, as opposed to everybody having all these little individual, not little, if you're saying 40 square feet, that's a significant size.
Okay.
Sign, 40 square feet, I mean, you're gonna be four by 10? I mean, think about that.
So your issue is with the off-premise sign, basically, is that right?
My issue is that if all of these signs are getting placed there at the entrance, wouldn't it be more practical and feasible and aesthetically pleasing to see one sign?
You don't want a bunch of little signs.
Only one sign, only one sign can go there. If the property is to be developed, then they could change that sign to a tenant's sign, but they would never have more than one freestanding sign. They could change that to a tenant's sign, if they want to. Straight Shot would be on there with, uh, maybe an arrow, and everybody else on this property would be identified on that tenant's side, much the way that they are over here. Well, they got two, but that's another story. Uh, uh, but yeah, be identified on one, one side.
That just makes more sense to me.
So that, that's what you would be looking at, because the ordinance speaks to vacant properties, and it also speaks to properties that have development on it. Properties that have development on it, they're, they're eligible for a tenant's sign, which could be backlit, or, you know, uh.
I mean, is this a make or break deal for Straight Shot?
But, but right now, they would have a sign that just said Straight Shot, because there's nobody else on the property.
Right. Well, I mean, my experience, just my experience with breweries of late, very few of them are very well marked, uh, they're very diff, you know, you put it in your GPS, and, I mean, I've visited a lot of breweries around, not, you know, just.
Sure, understood.
I mean, that's just one thing that I've done, and.
I think, yeah.
Most of them are not identified at a main road like that. You have to meander back through primarily industrial parcels to even find it, so.
And that's exactly why they want that sign right there, is that people won't be meandering.
But it doesn't keep people from coming there, is what I'm saying. People are gonna find it.
In this day, in this day of GPS, sure, absolutely.
They make it easier, but at the end of the day, people are gonna come, if they wanna come, they're not gonna come because they need to see the sign, say, oh, let me turn here.
If they're doing the brewery tour, they're gonna look it up. Yeah, absolutely. But this is, this is, you know, the, it's just an added enhancement. But I, I, I think I've got your question now, and I, and I'm sorry if I was unclear. While this property's undeveloped, that sign will be just for Straight Shot. If they sell this property and it's somehow developed, and of course, they've got their own agreement, uh, then this sign may change to a tenant's sign that identifies all the people on that property.
Okay.
So that's how that's gonna work.
Yeah, okay. But there's nothing to require that, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm saying. There's nothing to require that, that, that at that point it would have to become one sign?
Correct. And that's in Appendix D.
It can only be one sign.
One sign.
Regardless of who owns the property, is that what you're telling me then?
One sign regardless of who owns the property, yes. It's either gonna be a tenant's sign that identifies everybody in the development, or it's going to be, as it's proposed to be slated now, and I know the EDA's aware of this as well, uh, it's proposed to be just a sign, off-premise sign identifying Straight Shot Brewery.
So it's intended to be temporary in nature, is that what I'm hearing?
It could be permanent. I mean, it depends on whether EDA sells that property for commercial use or not. I mean, I don't know.
But there's no requirement that it be, I guess I am not making myself clear in what I'm trying to say, apparently.
Well, no, no, you're fine.
There's no requirement then that that become a tenant's sign, depending on the other people who build down here, or buy down here, or maybe they even subdivide that parcel, um, that long, that long narrow parcel, even the parcel behind it. All of those people can have a sign out front, is that, is that?
Actually, actually, no, because the people back here are not gonna abut any properties.
No, but they would abut, they would abut the one on the far right, up against, I can't read that word, uh, what is it?
Han?
Behind Food Lion?
Right there, yeah, behind Food Lion. That parcel right there would abut.
Okay, that's, that's the Han property.
Why, well, that would abut the parcel below.
And that's the White property.
Okay, so theoretically, the Whites.
Who is sworn, he'll never develop property, but.
So the Whites could have a, a, a sign on the adjacent parcel, which is the Han property at the road, is that correct?
In theory, yes.
So I guess what I'm just trying to get to is that theoretically, we could have one, two, three, four signs right there on Victory Boulevard within, I don't know how, why that property is.
Well, okay, these, these properties in here are not gonna work, because Straight Shot can only have one off-premise sign, and they're the only people that abut, I think there's two properties in there. There is a third property that's owned by Han that barely comes back here and touches on Mr. White's property. Uh, I don't think we'll see that property developed anytime soon, but the other issue is that there's no real road going through there right now, too. So there, there, there's some other issues that would be involved in development on that parcel. But, you know, in theory, if you're looking at a geometric drawing, which, which you are here, you know, can I say it's not possible? I mean, I'm not gonna say it's not possible. Highly improbable, but not impossible. That's probably about the.
Battle of the signs. Your sign is blocking my sign, and, you know, you're jockeying for possession running near Victory.
That sign would be down here, so that's a pretty good ways, but, you know.
Sevillar, who, um, I guess he's, he's no longer in that, that building, but the, the building coming on right as we come up City Hall Avenue, that they actually were grant, granted a, a variance to the sign ordinance to, did I hear correctly?
To put, to put a second freestanding sign on there, yes.
Um, and I would, I was going to say, because, um, Straight Shot Brewery is a, a new tenant in a, basically, an undeveloped area, that maybe some consideration could be made to some sort of temporary accommodation, um, that would allow them to have, at least initially, a sign indicating their property until such time as the other parcels sell, um, but.
Well, I mean, they could certainly.
But it would also be able to mitigate the precautions we've got to take right now.
I mean, that, that'll sort of be up to their agreement with the EDA. I mean, it's really what it's gonna come down to. Again, regardless of the glut of potential signs, at least in theory in here, just keep in mind that it's really, if you look at the overall map, I mean, there's, I mean, I'm not even sure what you said is really possible. Let me look back here. This property, I guess, could get an off-premise sign on one of these two properties, but other than that, you really don't have any need to do an off-premise sign for anybody. And, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a very confined area, but.
I personally don't have any problem with the sign itself being there, I was just curious as to what would happen if several signs were going there, across there, 'cause then you got Sevillar's across the way, across the street.
Well, you know, technically now, I mean, if the EDA owns these properties, they could, they can put a sign on every one of these properties if they want to. I, I think they, you know.
In addition to the?
Well, they have different properties that they own, but I mean.
But that little parcel could have a sign, Street Shot's got a sign, and the next two parcels could also have signs.
But this parcel cannot have an off-premise sign, because it does not directly abut any of these.
No, I don't mean, but it can have a sign. It can have a sign on Victory Boulevard, correct?
Well, I mean, if it was developed, yes.
As could the next two parcels behind where Street Shot, uh, Straight Shot is, they could also, so theoretically, you could have one, two, three, four signs right there together on Victory Boulevard, is what I'm saying.
You could have a sign on these, one of these two properties.
And what size is the limitation?
You're not gonna get one here, 'cause Straight Shot's already got their off-premise.
No, I just meant the four.
Now, if this got developed, sure, you could have a sign.
Four that front Victory Boulevard could each have a, a sign.
If they got developed, yes, they could.
Okay, now, the maximum sign size, did you not say was 40 square feet?
40 square feet.
I mean, that's a pretty large sign.
Yeah.
You're talking about five by eight?
Five by eight.
Pretty big sign, if you had four signs right there together.
Well, you know, you have to look at sign distance, too, and where, and I'm not sure, I know in the counties they were about 150 feet apart, I don't know what they are here.
What are the, what are the widths of those parcels, do you know, offhand?
Uh, I don't know, I didn't get that with me.
I was just curious.
I wish I had.
I mean, it doesn't, really, it's all a mood issue, as far as, really, because, exactly, at the end of the day, it's mood.
And we still have to.
I'm gonna say they're about 60 or 70 feet apart, maybe 70 feet across, something like that.
And if Wally had, Wally, do you, um, is that sort of the end of your presentation?
I guess you could call it the end, yes.
Okay. If it is, and of course, we'll have more time here to, to ask questions if we need to, but I would say that at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, 'cause I think, uh, we have, do have some speakers for this public hearing.
Okay. Let me get this out of the way.
I'll let Wally get his paperwork together.
I'll do this.
Thank you, Wally, appreciate it.
And I will be, I will be summarily dismissed, and I'll just sit down.
Appreciate it, but we, but we know where you are, so, all right. So now, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this agenda item, and if you do have something to speak about, please come forward now and give your name and your address, so the clerk will have it.
Hi, I'm Samuel Straight, um, and I live at 196 Odd Road. Um, this is my brother Christopher. Um, the two of us are the co-owners of what we hope will soon be Straight Shot Brewing here in Pecoson. Um, I do have some sort of prepared comments, but I'd be happy to address what you were just talking about with the sign. In our discussions with the city about that, what we had proposed, and still have to obviously work out the details, was that we would pretty much exactly do what you're talking about, is have, create a large monument sign with positions available for buildings and businesses that are gonna be developed in the future here. The way I read the ordinance is that there can only be one of these sort of guidepost monument signs for the development, because there's only one entrance to it, um, which is right there at City Hall Ave. So you couldn't have a number of these built because of that. And, uh, I mean, we would obviously try and, uh, work something out so that this would remain in place should that property be developed, um, down the road. At least that's our intention, so, and, uh, so, I don't know if you have any? Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, as you may be aware, adequate and effective signage is essential mode of advertising for, uh, businesses and their, between businesses and their patrons. At their most basic level, the signs convey identification and location information, which is absolutely critical for the success of the business. After all, if the potential customer remains unaware that the business exists, or cannot locate the storefront easily, that may result in lost revenue, and in the city's interest, a loss of taxable income. Further, we believe that necessary and effective signage can be designed to meet both community and architectural standards, which we're required to do under the, uh, guidelines that exist for VC, so long as these guidelines are clear, and we think that conflating the ordinances presented by Appendix D and those that currently exist in the VC District into a unified code will serve this purpose. As future business owners in the Village Commercial District, we see this measure as necessary for the success of our business, and we urge you to approve this for recommendation to the City Council, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask this gentleman? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and the Planning Commission will take this under consideration. Okay. Anyone have any more comments or questions?
I will simply comment, wait, excuse me, the last two times, and I'm perfectly satisfied with it, with the suggestions, with the exception of the illuminated signs. I realize I'm swimming up, uphill, uh, but I also find that, I'm not being critical, the City Council says they want to move this in the 21st century, but when we look at things like it, the city survey, what is the number one topic everywhere we went? Old town, hometown feeling, simple, keep things basic, keep things simple. I don't see that consistent with moving into the 21st century. I see a disconnect there. Maybe my age is showing, and I'm willing to admit that, but I'm not in favor of, I would, I was also not in favor of the ones for the public buildings in the school system. So I will tell you, I voted against that then, and I still am voting against the electronic signs. But everything else, I think, should go.
And as my, my counter for that is, I do respectfully disagree with council, um, as far as the, the electronic signs, I disagree with that, but in my opinion, that ship has sailed, and, uh, I think especially now with the geometry of the Village Commercial, where, um, some of the parcels do abut, uh, With Creek, um, as well as, uh, Victory, um, I wish that we didn't have the commercial electronic signs, I, you know, again, I disagree with that decision, but that.
I would agree with you, the ship has probably sailed, but I also say that I think our function is to advise. We don't set regulations, we don't set rules, we advise. And in my opinion, the advice that we gave before is still appropriate, and because City Council wants to go some other direction, does not change advice that I prefer to give them. That's just my way of looking at things.
Oh, I would agree with that, except that because they have granted it to other commercial properties, then I think we would be penalizing.
That's, that's my standpoint, yeah.
If we didn't, you know, if we didn't go through.
I feel that way, Libby, I, that's, that's my sentiments, because I don't think, it's not fair to deny, uh, you know, one section.
Right.
I, I, that's my premise altogether, I mean, I agree with you 100% on that. Uh, I mean, it, it's, it's no other way for me to look at that. So I'm, I'm, I don't know, is anybody prepared to make a, uh, make a motion to accept?
I'm, I'll move to, uh, accept the ordinance as written with the, uh, the electronic sign verbiage is included, I guess, in the current, I move that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
And Chairwoman?
Aye.
That motion carried by about a three to two.
Well, this time, Wally, I think, I think it's, I think you got your answer, Wally.
Well, there were five, so I knew.
He probably bribed the two guys to say wait.
I was sure he did. Okay, all right, so with that said, we'll just go to the communications and correspondence. Is Wally, you have anything unique to let us know about tonight, or?
Anything that readily comes to mind. Uh, we did first, we did do our first review of the Quarter Creek development, and some of y'all may be aware of that. Uh, we had fairly substantial comments, I believe they, uh, so I think they will be, none, none of which necessarily kill the deal, but a lot of it, they're gonna have to reconfigure what they're doing. And, uh, so, uh, uh, they're a good engineering firm, I've worked with them in the past, so I'm sure. Um, as far as City Council, we haven't had a lot with City Council, I have a lot more to tell you next month, obviously.
Oh, so we'll have a meeting next month?
Well, we'll, we'll go before the City Council in May, for the, uh, for the, um, after, well, we did the capital improvements plan. We're going, well, we're going with the capital, you'll have the comp plan, and I'll take the signs, though.
Okay.
So we'll have, have, have more. And I'm going to, one thing we talked about in City Council, is I'll certainly relay your concerns in my report, but, uh, when they make their decision, or whatever they provide me in the way of rationale, I'll make sure that.
All right, we appreciate that, thank you very much.
Nothing else from me this evening.
Okay. You have any thing to let us know about? All right, so we're good on that. All right, now we'll go down the line here, Libby. Got any comments, final comments? Angie?
Uh, nope, I appreciate the update on the Quarter Park.
Um, yes, I, I had a really wonderful conversation with Dr. Taylor, um, the other evening, um, he's actually moving ahead with a wonderful renovation of the Corner Lot, of the old
Yes, I had a really wonderful conversation with Dr. Taylor the other evening. He's actually moving ahead with a wonderful renovation of the corner lot of the old, I guess, Wells Fargo building, and very exciting, their plans for the future for expansion of their dental surgery. And he really expressed relief that the tattoo parlor has been, not, didn't go in that location, but he is very interested in looking at potential adjacent medical uses for that strip, so, stay tuned.
Bill? Oh, just that I should have mentioned before that on my vote, just like Commissioner Fenixson, my vote on the CIP was reluctant, yes, because there were some things I wish were clearer, but I also think we need to move on.
Okay, I don't have any comments at all, so I guess that's the end for tonight. We'll adjourn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Yeah, Russell was the real pusher against that tattoo parlor.